Yeah, actually the city there.
Good evening. Call this meeting to order. This is the regular council meeting of June 25, 2018. Time is 7:32. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Bliss.
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilwoman Craftstein.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
Yes, I'm here. Would you please rise for an invocation to be led by Councilman Robert Geddings and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Geddings?
Thank you, sir. We thank God for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today. And we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding. Enrich our hearts with compassion and courage. And again, receive our gratitude for the opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we add the approval or the resolution for the appointment of the acting city manager to the agenda under Reports and between III and IV, so make it III-A.
Thank you. Is there a second for the motion to add this to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Sir.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Protem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to add item D-III-A under Reports, a resolution to appoint an acting city manager. Is there any discussion on this item to add it? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening, so we can go straight to meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Were there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? All right, we can go to meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for anyone to address city council on any issue. It's not required, but it'd be helpful if you give your name, address, and affiliation. And if you'd be so kind to limit your comments to three minutes or less. Good evening. Hello.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Randy Speck, 3903 Nutcracker Court, Oxford, Michigan. I'm here, Superintendent of the Madison District Public Schools, and I'm somewhat confused, really, in many ways, because the Edison Elementary Building has been a polling location for decades. And we received communication, actually not through us, but through residents, that the city clerk's office was moving that to a different location. Was confused as the city clerk and I have communicated back and forth along with the mayor as to why the district, who owns that building, was not brought into the conversation about why we would be, why would be, we would be moving that location. There were some concerns that the city clerk let me know about regarding the building. I don't know that every polling location is a perfect location, but, but I do think that a location that has been a location for decades and an active member of this community, which is the District, Madison District Public Schools, should be a part of the discussion if you're going to remove it someplace else. I've asked that question multiple times, multiple times. Why were we not included in the discussion? I have yet to receive an answer about why we were not included. City clerk has, has been kind enough to let me know that she communicated to a secretary of mine, who has not worked in the district since November of 2016, along with talking with a custodian, who does not work in that building. Again, I continue to ask the question, why weren't we? This is what I know. When the city wants to get ahold of me, they get ahold of me. If it's during an election day and we have a yard sign that is within a half a foot of 100 feet, I get an email and a phone call. This is a big deal, to move a polling location. In our school district, our Board of Education, none of us were contacted. There were no public hearings. I hear that there was a report, so I asked the city clerk to send me the report. She graciously sent me the report. I went to print out the report. It said six pages. I thought, six pages? This will be good reading, six pages. And I looked at the report. It was five pages of Michigan election law and one and a half sentences about an issue that with a phone call to me could have been rectified. You've moved a polling location out of our school district to another school district, and you didn't even contact us. I've asked numerous times, why weren't we brought into that conversation? And I don't understand. I've gotten a lot of emails back, but I haven't gotten a response as to why the school district was not included. Again, when the city wants to get ahold of us, you get ahold of us. When city council members want to get ahold of us for certain things, you get ahold of us. But you moved a location that has been at the Edison Elementary Building for decades. I don't understand why we were not brought into that conversation.
Thank you. I mean, of course, the city is excited about the changes in the district and the, you know, the exciting curriculum at the Charter School, Keys Grace Academy. And maybe it's unfortunate that we did not include you in our decision to run elections. However, doors were locked and chained at the building. There was poor lighting. Buses blocked parking spots from voters. There was city election equipment that was lost. Doors were blocked with debris and trash cans. And we did hold a public meeting on this, so I know you're upset that you weren't involved in the conversation.
Were we notified about the public meeting? Were we? Again, again, Mr. Mayor, and the city clerk, and the city manager, phone calls, it is easy to get ahold of me. You know how to get ahold of me, guys. And you guys did not get ahold of the school district. And that is wrong. That is wrong. I have, I have asked numerous times why we weren't included in this discussion. And to say that, again, decades old, a decades-old use of that facility, and you're telling me no phone call could be made to the school district? It's not our renters' responsibility. It's the school district's responsibility. It's ours. We own the building. So I, I, I just, all I hear is excuses. And I do not understand why the school district, which again, when you need us, you call us, why weren't we included? Because this is a big deal, guys. This is a big deal. We've gotten phone calls from our residents, and, and this is not even bringing up issues we've had with the poll workers from the city at that location. But I just don't understand why we didn't get a phone call. I mean, that's an easy deal. An email or a phone call, hey, Randy, school board, we're going to have a public hearing about this, or can we make sure, since you are responsible for that building, not the renters, us, that you take care of our issues? Of course, voters have, they've, they've got to get to the polls. We've got to make good access. That is our responsibility.
That's the end of the analysis. Voters face a locked door. I mean, the process of communicating with you doesn't matter when voters are denied access to a poll. I mean, our relationship, our conversations don't ma, the only thing that matters is we provide an opportunity.
I disagree, Mr. Mayor. It is your responsibility as a city council to get ahold of us. The city, Cheryl, you couldn't, you guys couldn't get ahold of us. You get ahold of us if I have election material inside a certain area. That happened at the last election accidentally, and I got an email, super quick, on that. Threatened to go to the state of Michigan about election issues. But you didn't contact us about moving an election poll?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Geddings.
Not that this is super pertinent, but the, the lines on the school board for that particular area, if I believe I'm correct, run along Dartmouth, saw a person living across from the Old Woodland School, now the church, is in the Madison District. I grew, no, sir?
You moved it to another district. That's the point. You moved it and you didn't contact us.
No, I think you're missing, okay, I'll direct it to the mayor. My point was, I grew up right by Gardenia in that area. Some of the houses on Gardenia, if memory serves me correct, are Lampier. Kids went to Lampier back in the 60s. Some of the kids on that street went to Madison. That I know for an absolute certainty. And I can point the houses out to you, about three or four from the church on the corner. Not the church that we're talking about, I'm talking about the Gardenia Church. So the school districts here are 175 years old in Lampier and probably 70 to 100 years old in Madison. So you're saying that it's out of the district? It is, Mr. Speck, but less than probably 15 feet. Okay? I just want to make everybody aware of that. Dartmouth, the kids that live on that street attend the Madison schools. If I'm wrong, I'll be glad to say it, but I'm 99.5% sure. So by saying it's out of the district, it's barely out of the district.
All right, Mr. Geddings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. We'll keep this opportunity for the public to address city council. The meeting is still open to the public for any issue to be discussed. Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject? Yes, please, coming up. Good evening. Hi, how are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. I'm Julie Cooney, and I live in Clausen, Michigan, right down 14 Mile. But you guys are very close to me, so I feel kind of, and having lived in Madison Heights for five years, at the Heights, right around the corner, I have MS. And I know, you're all looking at me now like, oh, you do? You know, what do you, what, what is? MS is a silent disease. And it's silent, in that most people that have it don't broadcast it, you know? And the only reason I'm here today telling you about my MS is because marijuana has really helped me escape most of those problems that accompany MS. And that, I'm talking about walking, talking, everything. Me being able to work, and me being able to get up and go places where normal people do, you know? Normal people go to school, they work, they go home, they enjoy their life. That's all I'm asking. I just would really like to see Madison Heights pull through with marijuana. And it's important to me because my choices are either Madison Heights or driving down to Detroit. And I no longer drive. That, that luxury is not afforded to me. And so I just want a place closer to my home in Clausen to go to, to buy my medicine. And that's what it is. It is absolutely my medicine, you know? I wouldn't be up here talking to you if I didn't have access to it. I know that for a fact. I spent 10 years up in my room crying by myself every day because that's the depression that comes along with MS. But once I tried marijuana, and that was it. I've not been without it since. It was almost like an immediate, like, oh, it was a godsend. And I really hope you'll take that into consideration. Okay? Thank you.
Hello?
Hello, Mayor, and councilpeople. My name is Donna Darling. I live at 30294 Gary Avenue in Madison Heights. I've been a resident of Madison Heights for about all my life. What I'm here today is representing the senior group. I am with the advisory board, and we would like for our name to be changed. And I would like for each and every one of you to come and visit us and see what we do there. We're a part of this city, and we want, we want you to see what we do. So I invite you wholeheartedly, I'm there five days a week, so come on in, I'll give you a cup of coffee, whatever. But come in and see us and see what we do there, because we really do a hell of a job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, any wise words? Mike, Mr. Chairman, do you want to say anything?
Michael Sally, 25446, Miracle, Madison Heights. I, I just want to say the same thing that she just said. We, we really enjoy the Senior Center. I've had so many seniors come in there and say, oh, this is nice, but how much is it to join? We don't charge anything to join. It's a nice place. But we do believe that having the name "Senior" as part of the name is detracting from, detracting from it. There's too many people that say, well, just because I'm a little older, I'm not a senior,
All right. Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to address city council? The meeting is open to the public. All right, no one's asked to be recognized, so we'll close this portion of the meeting. We can go to Communications, item C1, from city manager Ben Myers. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. On May 14th, council approved the retirement transition agreement, which includes that my last regularly scheduled workday is June 29th. One important item requiring attention involves the current boards, commissions, and committees on which I serve, including the Downtown Development Authority, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Planning Commission, and City School Liaison Committee. I would like to officially tender my resignation from these four boards and commissions and effective today. And I would recommend the council accept my resignations and declare these positions vacant effective immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. What's the wish of city council on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Sir, I move that the council accept the resignation of Benjamin Myers from the Downtown Authority and Brownfield Development, Redevelopment Authority. Additionally, the Planning, City School Liaison. And I guess I hit both of them.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there support for the motion?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I second. And that's declaring the seats vacant. Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So the motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Mayor Protem Bliss, to accept the resignation of Ben Myers and to declare the seats vacant from the following boards: the Downtown Development Authority, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, the Planning Commission, and the City School Liaison Committee. Is there any discussion on this item? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. While the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could I ask a question, please? In what Mr. Speck spoke about, can we, when could we possibly make a motion to do what we're thinking of doing or possibly not think what we're doing?
Well, we typically leave any motions that are not on the agenda for maybe closing comments. If you wanted to bring a new motion that's not on our, our list of business items.
Okay, could I add something? In other words, are we taking action on the moving from Edison, or the old Edison, if you will, to?
No, there's no action today.
We did that six months ago. It's been done.
It's been done, okay. I apologize for that. Is there any way to add an agenda item right now, or am I out of order?
I mean, Mr. Geddings, typically, you can add or delete an item on the agenda. Traditionally, it needs to be supported by a report, either your own or a staff member. However, we do allow the opportunity for council members to make motions during closing comments. You know, occasionally that happens, where a council member, before the meeting is adjourned, say, you know what, I feel so passionately about this, I move to XYZ. Basic Robert rules of order, you need support.
Under closing comments?
Of course. That's always an opportunity for a member of council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we can continue on to Reports under Section D. The first report is D-1, from the city attorney, a resolution amending the composition of the Arts and Culture Advisory Board. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Protem Bliss has requested an amendment to the composition of the Arts and Culture Advisory Board. Currently, the board is comprised of 11 voting members, including three student members, one from each of the three high schools located in the city. The Mayor Protem has advised that only the Lampier school seat is filled, and that the Madison and Bishop Foley seats are vacant. He has also indicated that there are a number of Lampier students interested in serving on the board, and given the vacant seats from the other school, has requested a means to include other interested students and to help achieve a quorum due to the unfilled Madison and Bishop Foley seats. The Arts and Culture Advisory Board was created by a resolution of council. Therefore, provided for council's consideration tonight is a proposed resolution that would add three additional student-at-large seats on the Arts and Culture Advisory Board. The intent of the revision is to allow any interested students from any high school within the city to participate on the board, yet still leave specific designated seats available for each school, so as not to preclude or favor one school over another.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I actually move that we table Reports D-1, the resolution amending the composition of the Arts and Culture Advisory Board, and send it to the Arts and Culture Advisory Board's next meeting for review. They have not had a chance to review this yet.
Okay, is there a second for the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett. All right, the motion, Mayor Protem Bliss made a motion, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to table this report indefinitely and send it to the Arts and Culture Advisory Board for review. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
This is, this is an item that the Arts and Culture Advisory Board has been actively debating, but they haven't seen the resolution or the proposed changes yet. And so I want to make sure that they have the time to discuss. There are pros and cons to making a change. I want to make sure that they have the opportunity to vet it out before any decision is made.
Good decision. They shall advise us. Any other discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm not trying to be a nitpicker, but is this not an advisory board?
Yes, of course it is. It is an advisory board.
Okay, it's not policymaking.
No, purely advisory.
Okay, so for that motion, or for that matter, I'm going to vote no for that reason. Thank you.
Okay, it's a motion to table. Any other discussion? All right, the motion is to table this report indefinitely and to send it to the Arts and Culture Advisory Board for review. Any final discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, the motion carries 6 to 1. The next report, D-2, is from the DPS director regarding the Senior Citizen Center name change. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. Council's requested to approve the proposed resolution that officially changes the name of the Madison Heights Senior Citizen Center to the Madison Heights Active Adult Center in accordance with the adopted city goal for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
I've motioned to approve the proposed resolution to officially change the name of the Madison Heights Senior Citizen Center to the Madison Heights Active Adult Center in accordance with adopted city goal Z.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Craftstein?
Support.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on approving the proposed resolution to officially change the name of the Senior Center to the Madison Heights Active Adult Center?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I've had the privilege of serving on the senior advisory board as a member of council. I was appointed by council, and I've been there since November. I was, didn't know what to expect when I first went into my first meeting. There were a group of people around the table that knew very much about what was going on in the city, were very energetic and very active, that when I left my first meeting, I was out of breath because they were so energetic. I see the valid reason for changing the name. I think that the seniors are always very active there, and they inspire older ones to be as active as they are. I think they are a wonderful addition to our city, and I wholeheartedly support their name change, because I think that's going to describe them a lot better. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Any other discussion on this item?
Your Honor.
Yes, please.
So I, I very much support the, the Senior Center and the advisory board. I've got the opportunity to go to a few meetings back when Councilman Clark was the representative, and they do great work in the city. I really appreciate everything that they do. I do have a challenge with regards to the name change, in that typically, a board does not propose a, a name change. And we typically would vet out a name change of a city building a little bit deeper. I have some concerns that the Active Adult Center could be construed as available to any and all adults, and so there might be some confusion at the counter. I don't think that we've gotten sufficient feedback to be able to make that change. And so I would just like us to be very cognizant of that, and I would ask the rest of council, I will, I will support this measure, but about a year from now, I will, I will ask for a report from staff. I just want to make sure that there is no confusion, that there aren't younger members of the public that are confused by the name, that it doesn't deter seniors looking for a senior center, because that's also possible, that seniors in our city may not know where to go. They won't see that on the website as a city building specifically for seniors. And so I just want us to review this again in a year.
Thank you, sir. Is there other discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask for a roll call vote, please?
Yes, not a problem. Any other discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. If you're in favor of adapting the proposed resolution, you say yes. If you're opposed, you say no. Will the clerk take a roll call vote?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Sherman.
Let me just jump in before the roll call vote. The motion was to change the name of the Madison Heights Senior Citizen Center to, to the requested name, and Mr. Bliss's, Mayor Protem Bliss's comment is, is separate from the motion. If the maker of the motion and support wanted to add the review, they could, but I wanted to be clear for, for council's sake, that they're only voting on the name change. It's not.
Your Honor. Your Honor, I'll make that request at that time. We will pay attention, though, as, as it goes. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making a substitute motion, and I do support this.
No official request for a report now. If you think it's necessary.
Later.
Later, you'll bring it up later.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All right, a roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
No.
Councilwoman Craftstein?
Yes.
And Mayor Hartwell.
I vote yes. A motion carries 6 to 1. The next item is Reports D-3 from the DPS director, the solid waste hauling and disposal contracts extension. Mr. Myers, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The city is currently in a 10-year solid waste contract with Green for Life, or GFL. The current contract is set to expire June 30, 2020. GFL provides refuse, recycling, and compost pickup and disposal for our city. Our current contract does not accommodate the pickup and disposal of larger toters for recycling or trash. GFL's collection of refuse and recycling from these types of larger bins, bins has been as a courtesy only. Due to a growing request for our, from our residents for larger trash and recycling toters in the city, staff proposed a goal to council for fiscal year 2018. After adoption of this goal, staff began working with GFL to solicit various pricing options to accomplish the objectives of the goal and offer voluntary purchase and pickup of larger trash and recycling toters. Upon discussion with GFL staff regarding these larger toters, the city was informed that any requested changes to the current contract would require a contract extension. In order to expand our trash and recycling efforts, we would need to modify and extend the existing contract. If we choose to go out to bid, we will have to operate at status quo until the current contract expires on June 30, 2020. Upon hearing GFL's response, staff began contracting, contacting other municipalities that recently app. that recently approved solid waste bids or contract extensions with area trash and recycling vendors. This research revealed that in the majority of cases, municipalities were saving hundreds of thousands of dollars over the life of the contract by extending existing contracts with GFL as compared to bidding the service. Staff has conducted numerous meetings with GFL regarding possible implementation strategies and has been working on various pricing options in order to move forward with expanding recycling and trash collection operations in the city. All the pricing options were presented to the Environmental Citizens Committee. The committee and staff discussed and itemized, discussed and itemized all options in order to evaluate the cost differential between GFL-provided and city-provided containers. After meeting several times to discuss, and in conjunction with the adoption of the fiscal year 2019 goals and our budget, the committee recommended the option allowing residents to purchase 64-gallon recycling containers for $65 and 95-gallon trash toters for $75 directly from GFL. Residents would still be able to put out the smaller trash cans and the 18-gallon recycling bins if they choose for a planned October 1, 2018 implementation. The Environmental Citizens Committee and staff recommend that city council approve a five-year extension with our current solid waste contractor, Green for Life Environmental, at the unit prices specified under option 5 of Exhibit A, subject to final language approval from the city attorney's office. This contract extension will cover fiscal years 2019 through 2025, which encompasses the two remaining years of the current contract plus five additional years. All other items will remain unchanged in the contract unless noted in the amendments. Additionally, we request that by separate action, council vote and a supermajority would be required to appropriate $203,055 to cover the increased cost. Funds are available in the fiscal 2019 solid waste millage. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I would like to make a motion that city council adopts option 5 to, to extend the contract under these terms. GFL contract?
Okay.
I'm not sure of the wording you need for this. It's, I believe it's a two-part, because we also need to-
So take the first part?
Okay.
So your motion is to approve the five-year extension with Green for Life?
For option 5, where residents-
Under option 5?
Under option 5, where residents have the opportunity to purchase the 95-gallon trash toter or the 64-gallon recycling containers directly from GFL, but are still able to put out the smaller trash cans and the smaller recycling bins if they choose.
All right, are you basically adopting the staff recommendation in your motion?
Yes.
Okay, that's the motion. Is there, is there support?
Mr. Mayor's support?
Mr. Corbett? Thank you. Motion was made by Councilor Grafstein, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to adopt the recommendation approving a five-year extension with the current solid waste contractor, GFL Environmental, at the unit prices specified under option 5, subject to final language approval from the city attorney's office.
Your honor, just a point of clarification, I believe it's a seven-year contract, the remaining two plus an additional five.
Yes. Yes, that is correct.
Yep. Mr. Corbett, is that what you, will you assume?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion from city council? Mr. Mayor? Yes, please.
I'd just like to say that, in my opinion, the new company, Green for Life Environmental, is the same company, Rizzo, if I'm not mistaken. That kind of leaves a sour taste in my mouth of all the history behind that company and what happened to them, and I'm not quite sure, did they rectify the problems that they had? You know, I don't know. We never saw any evidence of that or, or any discussion whatsoever. I mean, I'm not against recycling. I do it myself voluntarily, but I for one would not vote for this.
Thanks, Mr. Soltis. Any other discussion from council or staff?
Your honor, just a point of clarification, GFL and Rizzo are by no means the same company, and in fact, we had to deal, and we dealt with the ownership change long before the, the extension was brought, brought to the table.
Your honor, so you're saying that Rizzo was, was not, or this company is not, did not take over Rizzo?
They did, but, but the inference that they're the same company with the same reputation is not-
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that they did take over that company, and, and we don't know if they rectified any of the issues that came up in the first place.
No more than what the U.S. Attorney's Office has, has publicly announced.
Well, I mean, if I have to speak for the residents, then I'm, I'm going to vote against it.
All right, thank you. Is there other discussion from council members?
Your honor?
Yes, please.
So I have a couple of things. The first is, we've had a lot of issues lately with trash and recycling being picked up late. So this, this does strike me as a very inopportune time, I think. I'm not sure that those issues have been fully rectified. I believe that it was due to short staffing. So I do have some concerns about that, that we're doing an extension at a point in time where we've probably gotten the worst service in the contract's history. So that, that does concern me. I also, I have a question about the, the contract. So it says we're allowing 95-gallon for trash and 64-gallon for recycling containers. Does the contract then allow for any container up to those amounts? Or is it just specifically those containers or the smaller ones? Because we do have a lot of residents with like the 32-gallon recycling bins, and I'd hate to force them to pick up another, you know, another bin. And then finally, I'd like to ask staff to give a rundown. I know this is a lot, but I'd love to have a little bit of a rundown of why do the renewal versus putting it out to bid, and why do the renewal now versus two years from now? I mean, is it the anticipation that just pricing is going to go up? And then what factual evidence do we have as a part of this debate? I appreciate the, the ECC has, has done a lot of due diligence on this. I just want some of that to make its way into this public forum so we can have a broader discussion. So those three things, timing now for both the financial reasons as well as the contract, the issues that our residents have been having, are they resolved? Is, and is that part of why we're doing this now? And then second, and third is, can, can all bins up to 95 and 64 gallons respectively be used by our residents in the city? Sorry, it's a lot.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Council.
I'll try to address those issues one at a time here, and we do have staff here from GFL to help with some follow-up responses if council wishes. The first, first item is timing. You are exactly right. The last six weeks have been horrible in terms of service levels. GFL knows it, we know it, but when you look at eight years of service and you bake that down to six weeks, we want to work with our contractor with dealing with those issues. In the packet, you guys will see a letter from Mr. Don Beretta explaining some of the operational challenges that GFL did have. It was an issue in southeast Michigan, not just exclusive to Madison Heights, and I think I gave council something in terms of letting our residents know they were having some issues out there. The timing does stink. We've been tracking complaints, and here I am bringing a contract extension to council, but we believe that GFL has gotten those issues rectified, and the last three weeks of service would certainly speak to that. So, timing not great, but something we are working with GFL day in and day out to, to rectify, and we believe we've gotten that situation corrected. I will say this, the, the month of May in terms of tonnages, and our reports will speak to it, there were massive volumes causing delays along with issues at the plant and the shutdown of 696 that all have kind of led and culminated with these delays. So, things have gotten much better. In terms of the residents, what was the second part I wrote down, residents?
Bin size?
Size of the garbage cans.
Garbage, garbage size? I do have that bigger cans, third. Was there something missing? I won't speak for GFL, but I mean, our, our ordinance calls for a 32-gallon trash can max or an 18-gallon recycling bin. Yes, there has been some variation out there in terms of people using different cans. I think GFL would prefer that the customers go with the larger toters that are over there or the smaller-sized cans, but I won't speak for you guys and Don, if you want to come.
Yep, thank you, welcome. Please, I'll speak into the microphone so we can get a record of this and those at home can listen. Good evening, your name, please?
Don Beretta, GFL Environmental. Glad to come down tonight to discuss the extension in front of you folks. We're here, and with me tonight is Tim Hess, who is our operations manager. When it comes to the carts, residents are going to, will purchase either the 96 or 64, and by the way, we do have a 64 trash cart for some of the seniors to think the 60, the 96s are too big. But we'll continue to pick up whatever the residents have out right now. That's up to a 32 to 35-gallon trash container, and I know there's a couple of different sizes of recycling bins. So if the resident wants the larger carts, we're, we're fine with that. If they want to continue to put out what they have, that's fine, too. We understand. We, there's only a couple of communities that have went fully automated, but then that requires the, the residents to either use the cart exclusively, which doesn't really work. And, and we also, you know, the bulk items are still on the table. We'll continue to pick up the large bulky waste, the furniture and appliances, on the same day that they put out their regular carts or trash.
Your honor?
Yes, please.
Can we confirm with staff that that is in the contract as the motion has been made? Up to the 95 and 64, that those will be picked up?
For the life of the contract.
For the life of the contract? Can we confirm that? Because I know it's on the record, but if it's not in the contract, then?
Your honor, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that gets reflected in the, in the documentation.
Yeah, the carts are guaranteed, they have a warranty for 10 years. We'll continue to have available and pick up the carts as needed.
The motion is subject to a final review by the city attorney's office.
Mr. Mayor, I think the, the concern is making sure that the smaller bins will be picked up for the life of the contract, not-
They will.
They will.
They will, yes.
And we're going to, where staff will confirm that.
We'll make sure that language gets into the, to the contract.
Thank you.
Mr. Beretta, I do appreciate your attendance here, and I did read your letter addressing the, the delays in pickup, and I, I really did appreciate your comment that you and your company will not be satisfied until our residents are satisfied, so thank you for stating that. Could you just briefly, you know, explain what, what was going on with the delayed pickups and what your company did to fix that?
Well, I'll try to explain it to you. It's all started last leaf season in 2017, where the leaves didn't fall when they should have, when they normally do, which extended it out, and a lot of people didn't even have a chance to clean up their yards or leaves.
You're right.
Then when winter broke, usually, we pick up most of the compost and cleanup of yards starting the end of March through April and into the first two weeks in, in June. Now, last, if you, and, and Joe has all of the data, because I send him reports every month. If you look back in April of 2017 and then look at 2018, we picked up two and a half times more yard waste in 2017. This year, we picked up 65% more yard waste just in the month of May. So that, that was a big issue, that some of the construction doesn't help. You look at almost 300 tons of yard waste being picked up, adds another load and a half, probably another three or four hours. We're properly staffed to cover everything that we did. And now, I mean, I'm sure everybody's aware, and I know that, that Joe probably has the same problem, to get qualified CDL drivers. We have enough to cover the city of Madison Heights, as we do all of our, all of our communities. We, we had, we had some trouble getting additional drivers to help in, with the influx of, of the volume increase. Now, that has been, that's been satisfied. We continue to hire, we have, we have job bears, we have spots on the radio, we have, we have a finder's fee for our employees if they bring, they bring a CDL driver in, they, they get, they get rewarded for that. So that, that's, you know, that has pretty much been affected. I think the last three weeks, we've been out of here somewhere between 3:00 and 5:00 o'clock. So that, that's, that once five or six-week period, it was hectic, and it wasn't just us. I mean, look, Tim and I both worked for Waste Management before. As a matter of fact, I was, I was with Waste Management when we signed the first 10-year contract way back, and we all, we all have struggled with that, and we're, we're doing the best we can to keep ourselves, our staff, you know, properly so we'd be able to provide the city of Madison Heights the, you know, the service that they expect. And, and I mean, the first eight years, I mean, very rarely did I ever get a complaint from Madison Heights, and anything that, you know, Ben or Joe had asked us for, I mean, we, we'd be glad to do it. We try to be a very good corporate citizen. So anything that comes up, we're, we're willing to chip in and help out.
Your honor? Thank you for the explanation. Yes, Mr. Bliss?
Just a quick question. I keep hearing eight years. I know in the comments earlier to Councilman Soltis, GFL has taken over in less of a period of time than that?
We've been, yeah, GFL has, has-
How long has it been?
Had the company for less than two years. It's been about a year and seven months, year and eight months.
Okay. So about, what, 5% of that time, we were having overages or late-night pickups of that time. I just don't want to, I don't want to get confused with, you know, saying eight years if it is a separate company. I think that kind of lends to Councilman Soltis's point if we keep saying eight years, because six of those years were with Rizzo. Is that correct? Do you assume?
Yeah, you're saying either way, there's kind of a, a raised eyebrow. Either they want to take credit for the years of being Rizzo, and that's troublesome, or if they just want to take a clean slate in their GFL, well, the few months that they've been on the job, they haven't produced per our expectation. So I, I see what you're, your point's well made.
Believe me, I'm not trying to take credit for, you know, the previous, previous six and a half years.
You're fine. Any other discussion from city council? Your honor?
Yes, sir? If I may add, and I'm not anti-GFL, you know, I'm just going by what, what I remember reading about, in fact, there's a Crane's article in here, too, about it. I mean, I understand you're doing operational corrections, but my point was, what kind of internal constraints are you, did you implement in order to make sure that that doesn't, this type of fraudulent behavior doesn't happen again?
GFL, GFL requires all of its employees to sign an agreement towards that. And, and the only people that are not here anymore, the company stayed intact the way it was. There's only three people that, that are not here anymore. One's in jail, one's probably going to go to jail. And Rizzo Environmental Services wasn't accused or convicted of anything. It was two, two of the senior officers of the company that were-
No, I understand that.
That have been, that were gone within the first two weeks of GFL taking over.
No, I understand that they're gone, but there was some, in my opinion, or my question is, was there in an environment that created the, for them to get away what they, what they did for, for however long it was? That, that's being corrected now. Was that even looked at, or you just assumed that get rid of the top three and then everything's going to be fine?
Mr. Soltis, I don't think it's fair for him to address that. He's not a corporate attorney or an executive.
No, I'm not asking. As, as you're representative here, the, the owner's not here, so you're the only person I can ask.
Well, the only thing I can tell you is, GFL has strict guidelines when it comes to, comes to that. We all have to sign off on it. If, if ever, if anything ever comes up, you are immediately discharged. Now, what happened between the two people that owned Rizzo Services before, I'm not privy to that. I don't know what they, I don't know how they did it or how long they've done it. The only thing I can tell you is, within the first week, the main, the main person was gone, and a week after that, the other one was gone.
Right, after the fact. All right, thank you.
Mr. Myers?
Your honor, but, Don, without putting you on the spot, maybe it would be helpful to talk briefly about the ownership change between Rizzo and GFL and the, and the corporate control in terms of being a new, new operation that way?
Well, when they, when they came in, I, the deal, the deal took place on September 30th of 2016. And, and this is just, you know, my understanding after I met the, the new owners of the company. It was closed out on September 30th. Two weeks after that, the news article hit the Detroit Free Press. That is, I heard about it when I was coming back from vacation with my wife. It was by a DPS director that called me and said, "Did you hear what was going on?" "I don't know." Patrick Davigi is the major owner of GFL Environmental out of Toronto, and he was in, he was in here, and he introduced himself, and Luke Pelosi is his second-in-charge. And they came in and they went through, I mean, I'm assuming they went through, I'm assuming they did their due diligence before they bought it, okay? So I don't, you know, after that, then, then they came in with, with what their corporate policy is in, in regards to, to things like this. And we all, we all understood, we all needed to sign off on it. They stayed around, he stayed around here for over six months, meeting with all of our, our, all of our major contracts. Introduced himself, explained what, what had happened from his, from his perspective, and assured the people that we had, all of our communities that, that, that things are going to change and that, that kind, that kind of action will not be tolerated. Now, during that time, we had, there were other contracts that we were dealing with. Matter of fact, probably the second or third week we were here, the city of Dearborn Heights awarded a five-year contract to GFL. And shortly after that, we, we received the city of Dearborn. So, I mean, those people looked at everything that was going on, saw a good company, and they decided that they would, they would select GFL to be their solid waste provider. And then we, we've, we've been awarded three or four other contracts within this, within this year and a half.
Well, all right, I'm not going to get into debate with you. Whether other cities did or not doesn't mean we have to.
No, I, I understand.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, just to give a little bit of background on GFL, not Rizzo, it's, it's about eleven years old. They were set up in two thousand and seven. And last year, the owner actually was recognized as being Entrepreneur of the Year for Utilities and Power and Environmental Sector for Ernst &amp; Young's Ontario Entrepreneur Award, if that means anything. This guy is not the same guy that was running Rizzo. I completely understand your concerns, but this guy is not the same one.
I didn't say he was, just for the record.
No, I know. I know.
Okay, I think, any other discussion from City Council?
Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Bliss?
Just two quick follow-ups. The first is, I'd still like to understand a little bit more about why now, from a financial sense. Is there a, you know, is, is the contract offered at such a great rate that we have to act today? And then the other piece of that, this year, we have enough currently, currently budgeted, you know, we have the, the solid, the solid waste levy, that, that millage covers it. We have enough in there for this year. But the, every year of the extension has a two and a half percent annual increase. Are we handcuffing, is that going to come out of the general, the general fund in future years? Are we going to have to handle that? Or is the millage going to grow at that two and a half percent rate so we won't see a change?
Your Honor, there's, there's never, there's no guarantee of future millage growth at a, at a certain percent. We seem to be on a, a, a positive trend now, Mayor Protem, but yes, it is coming out of the general fund. To the extent we can fund it all from solid waste millage, we certainly will do that.
Okay. And, Your Honor? The, the timing for now, is, is somebody prepared to be able to talk about why this contract is here today as opposed to in a month or two months or even a year?
Certainly. We're, we're not handcuffed to a contract extension, to answer your counsel, answer your question. In terms of the goal proposal from fiscal year eighteen, we wanted to provide our residents with the option for these carts. So in talking with GFL, that, that kind of led to contract extensions that were alluded to in the, in the staff report. And we want to provide these carts to our residents. We have had a clamoring from the community to be able to get these carts. We are two years removed from an extension, and Melissa and I did a pretty comprehensive analysis of what's out there, Mayor Protem Bliss, in terms of what communities are doing right now. In some cases, communities that chose to bid, they were paying ten percent more than what their extension prices were. We were certainly scared by that. Some communities that extended, our pricing was better for a like-for-like community. All of that analysis was brought to the ECC and shared with them. It's not in the staff report. To answer your question, no, we don't have to extend. We could sit for two more years, but with all the facts in front of us, being able to provide our residents with these carts, we have had some supplemental information that speaks to helping with road and control with these carts. The ECC is ripe with a recycling education piece that we're offering to our residents and going to be presenting to them. We want to engage these larger recycling carts. And in my opinion, this contract will save us money long-term. If we choose to go out in two, two years out to bid, I think, I think that will cost the city money. That's my personal opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to add to that, that yes, there are a lot of people who are interested in having these large carts. And it's my understanding that GFL now, as a favor, is unofficially collecting them. But they're not going to do that for the next two years. So knowing that we are looking at potentially doing an extension, they have said we will do this unofficially until this point. So that's part of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Would the maker and co-maker of the motion be acceptable to accepting the carts to the public for sale as part of the motion? Or if it's already in there? I apologize, I had a fender bender today. I didn't get to finish my reading of all the material. I apologize, that was my error. But is that a possibility, you guys?
Your Honor, option five does include that, and let, let me read it directly. Residents would purchase ninety-five gallon trash totals, toters for seventy-five dollars and sixty-four gallon recycling containers for sixty-five dollars directly from GFL.
Okay.
And they will still be able to put out the smaller trash cans and the eighteen gallon recycling bins if they so choose. That, that is part of the motion.
Okay, great.
Part of the options, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. And Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Other discussion from members of City Council?
Possibly, Mr. Mayor, a roll call vote?
Yes, please. Okay, yes, yes. Any other discussion before we do a roll call vote?
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
I know that we were told under staff, that under staff review, the language of all containers up to those limits, ninety-five gallons for trash and sixty-four gallons for recycling, would be included. Is it possible for, would the maker and the second be willing to adopt that into their motion? Just for clarity's sake.
As I understand, the gentleman just wants to codify what, what we said at the table under the written language. It shouldn't be a problem for everybody. Am I right about that, guys?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm getting half a nod.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I thought all of that was part of option five from the beginning, when Ms. Grafstein made her motion and, and there was support. Is that correct, gentlemen from GFL? They're nodding their heads, yes. It's included in the motion. And, and it's subject to the city attorney's review anyway, and I can guarantee council that whatever we've agreed to will be in that contract. Jeff Sherman has been drafting all of those waste hauling contracts, and it will be there. So that's all encompassing in option five.
Any other discussion from members of council?
Your Honor, forgive me. Can I just ask the Director of DPS, Joe? How many competitors are out there, valid competitors?
About three or four. You've got GFL, Waste Management, Tringali, and Republic.
Republic, you said? Thank you.
All right, this, final discussion from council members? All right, a motion was made by Councilor Grafstein, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to adopt the ECC and staff recommendation to approve a five-year extension with the current solid waste contractor, Green for Life Environmental, at the unit price specified under option five. And this is subject to final language approval from the city attorney's office. We'll do a roll call vote.
Your Honor, just to clarify, we're looking at a two-year plus a five-year.
Oh, you're right. To finish the remaining two years and add in additional five years. So if you agree with the recommendation, the vote is yes. If you disagree, the vote is no. Will the clerk take the vote?
Councilman Soltis.
No.
Mayor Protem Bliss?
No.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Council, Councilor Grafstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Hartwell?
I vote no, and the motion passes four to three.
Mr., go ahead, Mr. Corbett.
I was just going to say, on a four to three, we might as well, I would move to postpone consideration of the second item. Because I am going to guess that the three who voted no are going to vote no on the appropriation of the money.
I'm not laughing at you, I'm just laughing out loud.
Somebody wants to disagree, go ahead. Otherwise, I move to postpone consideration of the appropriation referred back to staff.
This is... Is this a substitute motion?
No, it's not that it's just a motion.
I think we can vote. I mean, what's, it's already been done, the contract's been approved, so I think political opinions will change because the issue's been decided.
In that case, I withdraw my motion, and I will offer a motion to approve two hundred and three thousand fifty-five dollars. Funds available in the FY twenty-nine solid waste millage for the adoption of the extension.
Mr. Mayor? Second?
Thank you, Mr. Corbett, for the motion. And there was a second from who?
A second.
Ms. Grafstein. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to appropriate two hundred three thousand fifty-five dollars to cover the increase of the just now recently approved five-year, two-year plus five-year extension with Green for Life. The funds are available in the solid waste millage.
Excuse me.
Is there discussion from City Council on this second item? All right, no discussion? We'll vote all in, oh, we'll do a roll call vote, just because it could be interesting. So those in favor of the appropriation, you say yes. Those who oppose the appropriation for the contract that has already been approved, you say no. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Protem Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Grafstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
No.
Mayor Hartwell?
I vote yes. Matter passes six to one.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings, please.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you.
But I've made many mistakes in my life, and I just made one on the other item before this. I'd like to change my vote, because I misunderstood the motion where it went six to one. I'm not changing my vote because I got beat on the item, it's just that I misconstrued the motion.
So for, you're, you're talking about your vote on the, the name change for the senior citizen center?
Correct.
Okay, so procedurally, this will take two steps. We would need a, you would need to get council's permission to reconsider the vote. If council agrees and votes yes to reconsider, we would then completely re-vote on the whole matter from scratch.
Okay. Could I?
So unfortunately, the losing side of a motion cannot bring a motion to reconsider.
Correct.
So you need a member of council to move to reconsider the vote of item D two, the senior citizen name change.
Okay. Anyone willing to help me out here?
Your Honor. Mr. Geddings just wants to change his vote from no to yes, that's all.
Your Honor.
Yes, Mr. Soltis?
I'd like to say the word.
Reconsider.
Reconsider.
Item D two, the senior citizen name change.
Reconsider item D two with a name change.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
I'd be pleased to...
Mr. Corbett? Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Soltis, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to reconsider the vote for item D two, senior citizen center name change. We need five votes to, to allow us to reconsider this. So this is just the vote. Shall we reconsider this? Yes. Or if you say do not reconsider this, you vote no. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of reconsidering?
Yes.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. All right, the motion carries, the issue shall be reconsidered. Can I have a motion back on item D two to adopt the proposed name change of the senior citizen center to the active adult center?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
The staff recommendation on the item.
I'd like to support that, sir.
All right, motion was made by Councilman Geddings, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to adopt the staff recommendation of item D two regarding the senior citizen center name change. Any discussion?
My apologies for wasting everyone's time, but I was a hundred percent for this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, the vote previously was six yes, one no. I'm assuming it's going to be seven yes, zero no, but we'll see. So all in, any discussion? Okay, so we're back on the senior citizen name change. All in favor of the proposed change, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The motion carries, seven oh. All right, we can continue on the agenda, and this is the portion of the agenda where we added an item, and we called it three A under reports. This was a resolution to appoint an acting city manager. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I move that the council adopt a resolution appointing Melissa Marsh as the acting city manager effective six twenty-nine eighteen pursuant to section three oh nine of the charter, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Is there a second?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I support.
Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Mayor Protem Bliss, to adopt a resolution appointing Melissa Marsh as the acting city manager effective June twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, according to the charter provision cited. Is there discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. We can continue on to reports D four from the deputy city manager. Reports entitled, "The Acting City Manager Boards and Commission Appointments." Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. In light of the action just taken by council, I am requesting Deputy City Manager Melissa Marsh be appointed to the following vacant seats as acting city manager, also effective June twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, in order to provide for a smooth administrative transition. The first seat is Planning Commission as the administrative official with ex officio vote with a term to coincide with the term, to coincide with the term of the mayor appointing the acting city manager, which is November eleventh, two thousand nineteen. The second is the Downtown Development, DDA Authority and Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the unexpired term ending November eleventh, two thousand nineteen, and I believe those can be handled by one motion. And then last is City School Liaison Committee for an indefinite term. And we would recommend that, except for the DDA and Brownfield, which is one motion, that those others all be taken by individual motion. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Myers, is there a mayor's appointment?
Yep.
Is it just to the Planning Commission?
And DDA.
Okay, so would City Council accept my appointment of Melissa Marsh to the Planning Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I move that the council confirm the mayor's nomination, nomination of Ms. Marsh to the Planning Commission as administrative official.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made to confirm the mayor's appointment of Melissa Marsh to the, as the administrative representative on the Planning Commission. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sherman?
I think the maker of the motion and support should add that the term of the mayor's appointment of the acting city manager is to, is to be until November eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
I agree to the change, sir.
Mr. Geddings?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. May I have another motion regarding these appointments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Assuming that sounded like a nomination, I'm going to move to confirm that nomination Assuming that sounded like a nomination, I'm going to move to confirm that nomination to the DDA and the Brown Town redevelopment.
Yes, that's my nomination, thank you. Is there a second for the motion?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I support.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Mayor Protem Bliss, to confirm the mayor's appointment of the acting city manager Melissa Marsh to the downtown development authority and the Brownfield redevelopment authority. I'm sorry, is there a term date to expire?
Yes, Your Honor, that would be November 11, 2019.
I agree to that.
Mr. Corbett, Mr. Bliss, do you agree to that?
Yep.
Is there a discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, the motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the appointment of the city school liaison committee? Is that just a straight-up council nomination?
Yes.
That's a council nomination to the city school liaison committee.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I would move that Ms. Marsh be appointed to the city school liaison committee for an indefinite, indefinite term.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Graffstein?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion on appointing Melissa Marsh to the city school liaison committee for an indefinite term? If there's no discussion, let's vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no, the motion carries. And that wraps up that matter, we can move on to the next report, it's item D5 from the city clerk and the city attorney. It's a resolution adding annotations to the city charter election provisions that are superseded by state law. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor, council's presented with a proposed resolution that would add annotations to two sections of the charter of the city. In brief, the proposed resolution would add language to the charter to note that two of our charter sections have been superseded by Michigan election law. Over the years, the Michigan election laws have been amended to reflect various changes in elections, however, given the very costly, time-consuming and necessity to place on the ballot, proposed amendments to the charter, our charter has not reflected that changes consistent with the Michigan election laws. Pursuant to state law in our charter, Michigan election law supersedes our charter provisions when there is an inconsistency between the city charter election provision and Michigan election law provision. Based on the 2012 state law revision, the Michigan Municipal League, or MML, conducted a search of all city charters in the state. This spring, the MML contacted the city clerk to request that we annotate our charter to note a change in the Michigan election law that is inconsistent with our charter provision regarding the timeframes for filling nomination petitions. In addition to the specific request by the MML to annotate the charter regarding the times fulfilling nominating petitions, the city attorney's office is also recommending a housekeeping measure to add another annotation to the charter regarding the regular municipal election dates. As council is aware, Michigan law requires elections to be held on the November regular election date in an odd-numbered year. However, our charter provision still references an April or spring regular election date, which has been superseded by state law for a number of years. Therefore, we are also recommending adding an annotation to this section of the charter to note that the Michigan election law has superseded the spring regular election dates and note that the correct date is the November regular election date. City Attorney's Office, staff, and I request that council adopt the proposed resolution affecting those changes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, what's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I move that council adopt the proposed resolution to add annotations to city charter election provisions as drafted.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you, motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilor Graffstein, to adopt the proposed resolution as drafted regarding added annotations to the city charter election provisions. Is there discussion? Hearing none, let's vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no, the motion carries. The next report is item D6 from the deputy city manager, it's the fiscal year 2017 to 18 and 2018 to 19 budget amendments and carryforwards. Mr. Myers, please.
Yes, Your Honor, state budget law requires that any budget amendments be approved by council. The budget amendments are submitted to ensure that the fiscal 2018 and fiscal 2019 budgets are in compliance with state law. If council concurs, the appropriate action would be to approve the implementation of these amendments and appropriate the necessary funds, which requires a supermajority vote.
Thank you, what's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Sir, I move that the council adopt the recommended, recommended changes to the FY 2017 and 2018 to 19 budgets as submitted by the deputy city manager and appropriate the necessary funds.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings?
Second.
Thank you, sir, motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to adopt the recommended changes from the deputy city manager for fiscal year 2017 to 18 and 2018 to 19 and appropriate the necessary funds. Is there discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to go through all of the line items, but for the sake of transparency for the public, would staff be willing to give kind of an overview as to what some of these changes are?
It's a good idea, thank you, Mr. Bliss.
Your Honor, yes, very briefly, in the general fund, on the revenue side, we do, we do have amendments that reflect additional local community stabilization sharing money that has come in. We're also reflecting that our general fund revenue for RV lot fees may be moved to the water and sewer funds so that it can be properly accounted for there. And on a positive note, we're seeing increased program activity in the senior citizen department and division, so we have a corresponding revenue increase in, in program activity expenditure. On the expenditure side, there were a couple items that council approved previously that are reflected in these amendments, the fire department BRICS alerting system, which was approved back in September, the defibrillators, which were approved January 8 of this year. We have a couple of, we have an ambulance and a parking lot improvement that we need to account for. Also, there are some changes to reflect the proper accounting for our DPS labor, which has been split out differently over the last couple of years, so. Oh, and lastly, I would note several parks items, including the Ambassador Park asphalt pavement and swing sets, which are on for amendments. I think that gives a good, good overview of the general fund, Your Honor, members of council.
Thank you, Mr. Myers, anything further? Mr. Bliss?
That's it, Your Honor.
Any other discussion from City Council? All right, thank you, let's vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, the motion carries. We can go to item F1 in the agenda, it's a bid award or purchase from the DPS director, it's the materials hauling and disposal services. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor, 2006, our longtime hauling contractor, Orville Wansey, passed away, and there was a subsequent dissolution of his company. At that time, we went out, we went out to bid for various hauling of various construction and restoration materials to and from our DPS yard. Those materials include sand, topsoil, various aggregates, and then the hauling away of broken concrete, clay, and construction spoils, leaves, wood chips, and then debris from our sewer vector and our sweeper. That bid was awarded to Bedrock Express Limited, who continued to hold their original prices until this year after the expiration of their initial five-year contract. Although the pricing provided by Bedrock is favorable, the staff has noted a steady decline in the level of service provided over the last several years, particularly with the delivery of sand in and then the hauling out of dirt spoils. The timely, timely delivery of sand is crucial for the expedient installation of our water main during the summer construction season, and I would note as a result of their, Bedrock's inability to deliver, the Brush Street Water Main replacement project was temporarily halted last week due to lack of sand. The staff have repeatedly attempted to obtain service from Bedrock through multiple and frequent calls and emails, to no avail, and this has increasingly resulted in us having to find alternate vendors on an emergency basis only to keep our projects running on schedule. So, due to those performance issues, this past May, staff posted an invitation to bid for material hauling and disposal on our mitten online purchasing system with a site visit scheduled for May 16 to the DPS yard. The bid included a comprehensive list of materials as well as estimated annual quantities based on our past orders. Although 216 vendors viewed the bid, including 19 who downloaded the bid documents, only one bid was received by the May 24 deadline, and that was from Jackie's Transport. In reaching out to several local vendors to determine why they didn't bid, staff confirmed that the currently booming construction industry has resulted in a surplus of work and a shortage of labor. Simple cost analysis of the bid based on the estimated quantity shows a 39% increase over our current pricing, which equates to about 3.25% per year since 2006. The majority of the hauling contract, however, consists of sand in and dirt out, which has not been delivered with any consistency by the current vendor, Bedrock. Reference checks for Jackie's Transport were overwhelmingly positive in terms of service and product, and confirm that the pricing and proposed increases are in line with what the industry is currently seeing. Based on these facts, staff and I recommend that council award the bid for DPS materials hauling and disposal to the sole qualified bidder, Jackie's Transport of Northville, Michigan, for the specified unit prices in an estimated first-year cost of $191,995. The bid will begin immediately, since the first year of the bid is inclusive of the remainder of the current fiscal year and the entirety of fiscal year 2019. And last, I would note that funds are budgeted and available. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Myers, what's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mrs. Scott.
I move for council to award the bid for DPS materials hauling and disposal to the sole qualified bidder, Jackie's Transport, Inc., of Northville, Michigan, for the specified unit prices in an estimated first-year cost of $191,995.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Support, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett, motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to award the bid for DPS materials hauling and disposal to the sole qualified bidder, Jackie's Transport of Northville, Michigan, for the specified unit prices in an estimated first-year cost of $191,995. Is there discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no, the motion carries. The next item is F2, it's from the police chief regarding camera and DVR system. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, last week, the police department digital video recorder DVR camera recording system that handles the exterior of the building and the gate entrance areas failed. The DVR can't be repaired, and all of the analog cameras are past their use expectancy. Further, several of the cameras utilize old technology that will not function with a new DVR, and accordingly must be replaced. The police chief obtained three estimates for the work to replace the cameras and DVR with updated technology. The most forward-looking of these estimates is that provided by our city IT contractor, BPI, who not only provided a digital solution, but also included a DVR that has 48 ports, which will allow for us to expand as we change out other analog cameras to digital. Although this is the highest estimate, it plans for the ability to move the other two DVR systems to the new DVR at a later date when funds are available. This estimate also used, utilized the government contract for state and local governments for parts, which helps us not have to bid this, but still get a cooperative and competitive purchasing advantage. As reported by the chief, the police department cannot properly handle day-to-day operations without the recording system in place and working properly. Staff and I recommend that council approve the purchase with CDWG and BPI for this camera and DVR equipment replacement project in a total amount of $23,088.34 under the Michigan State and Local Government Contract with CDWG. This will allow for immediate purchase and upgrading of the system, and will provide much more economical repairs in the future. And I would note to help offset the purchase, we will seek a grant from the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, of which we're a member, to potentially cover 1/3 or 7,700 of the total. In addition, since this purchase was unexpected, council is also being asked to appropriate by a separate supermajority vote $23,089 for the purchase and installation in fiscal year 2019. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, what's the wish of City Council?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I move that the council approve the request of purchase of the exterior camera and DVR system in the, well, assuming the $7,000-odd grant, it would be a $23,089 appropriation by the council.
Thank you.
Do you want to motion?
So, the motion is first to approve the purchase, and then we'll take a second motion to appropriate the funds.
But, Your Honor, you could do it in one motion, but that one motion would have to have a supermajority vote, since it involves appropriation.
I'm going to risk it this time, Your Honor.
All right, would you please restate it?
I would include both the, both the appropriation and the approval, I'm just feeling right close here.
Thank you, very good. Thank you for the motion, Mr. Corbett, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Okay, thank you, motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve the purchase with CDWG and BPI for the camera and DVR equipment replacement project in a total amount of $23,088.34, and at the same time, to appropriate those funds, which would require a supermajority vote for the purchase and installation in fiscal year 2019. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just the observation that one reason besides security that the system isn't placed, as I understand it, also the parking lot of the police department is where a number of transactions occur, including children going over in custody of, custody of weapons and that sort of thing. So, there is, and certain craigslist purchases, we've recommended that people do in the park, either in the parking lot or the lobby of the police station, so it's, it's more than just for the physical security of the building, it's also the, the public that has reason to be concerned about these things. That's it, sir.
It's a great point to bring up, I didn't even consider that. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
If I may, put the deputy chief on, on the spot, if you can answer.
Welcome, Deputy Chief.
Mr. Mayor, council, good evening.
Yes, sir, so, since we picked the highest of the three estimates, is it worth extra money?
I believe it is, it, like you, like Mr. Myers read, that this estimate is something that looks into the future, that we can add on to this DVR system. Currently, we have three DVRs that we're working with, one of them failed. This one is all digital, it incorporates our internet, so we can log on to our computers at our desktops, review videos, download videos from there. Moving forward, we can add additional cameras to it, which will be digital versus the analog that we currently have.
It's good enough for me, thank you.
Hey, I know it's off-subject, but while you're in the hot seat, you're one of the departments I want to specifically thank for the, working the festival in the park yesterday. Of course, the city manager's office, but the police department did an excellent job securing the grounds and making the public feel safe during that really important city event, so thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, it went very well.
Thank you, sir. Sorry to hijack the discussion, but is there any other discussion for this item on the DVR and camera purchase and appropriation? All right, hearing no further discussion, we can vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, the motion carries, 7-0. We can skip ahead in the agenda to minutes, may I please have a motion to adopt the minutes of the special meeting of 6/11/18?
Your Honor.
Yes, please.
I move that we adopt the minutes of the special city council meeting of 6/11/18 as printed.
Yes, sir, is there a second?
Your Honor.
Mr. Soltis?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion on adopting the special city council minutes of 6/11/18 as printed? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, say no, the motion carries, 7-0. May I please have a motion regarding the minutes from the regular meeting of 6/11?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt the minutes for the regular council meeting of 6/11/18 as printed.
Yes, sir, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Thank you, is there any discussion on adopting as printed the minutes from the regular council meeting of 6/11/18? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, the motion carries. We can now move on to appointments to boards and commissions, I do see there is Carol Prisby on the library advisory board is willing to renew a two-year term, would someone on coun, it's not a mayor's appointment, but would someone on council offer that nomination?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corbett.
Move to reappoint Mrs. Prisby to a term expiring 7/1/20 on the library advisory board.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott, any discussion on reappointing Carol Prisby for a two-year term to expire 7/1/20 to the library advisory board? If there's no discussion, we can vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries. Oh, also, there is a reappointment for Mr. Michael Sally to the senior citizens advisory board. This is not a mayor's appointment, so would a member of council make a nomination?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Geddings?
Move to reappoint Joe Vitale to the senior citizen advisory board.
Mike Sally, Michael Sally, if I misspoke, I'm sorry, Michael Sally.
I was going to say, this is not my best meeting, kids, I'll make the same motion with a correction.
With Michael Sally. With Michael Sally, it's his second term to expire June 1st, year 21, Mr. Gettings?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Gettings, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to reappoint Michael Sally to a second term on the senior citizen advisory board and a term expiring 6/1/21. Any discussion?
Just the observation, Mr. Mayor, that Mr. Vitale is not aging well, but other than that, I will defer that back, sir.
Okay.
I think Mrs. Scott wanted to give him the appointment.
Well, Mr. Sally, thank you for attending tonight's meeting, and thanks for volunteering to serve as chairman in multiple capacities, so thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I would like to applaud Michael Sally. I was very impressed from my first meeting with him on the senior advisory board. He's a very fair chairperson, who listens well, who communicates well, and directs the meetings in a wonderful fashion. I applaud his participation and his renomination.
Very good. Other discussion? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Thank you. Are there other nominations to boards and commissions this evening? All right, hearing none. There's no executive session, so before we adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments from members of city council and staff, and I'd like to begin with Mr. Corbett.
Thank you, Your Honor. Not to belabor an already a longer meeting, but I just want to acknowledge the last meeting of Mr. Myers. Thank you very much. I've enjoyed my experience with you. I've expressed my opinion elsewhere about my admiration for you and the work, and the gratitude of the community for your efforts. Thank you very much, and good luck to you.
Thank you, council.
That's all, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor, a few things tonight. The first, I was really excited, the first, the very first program that our newly-formed Arts and Culture Board did was a photo exhibit that was in City Hall. We had more than 100 people show up. There was live entertainment. We had all of the photo submissions on display, and it was a really great time. And then they followed that up with at the festival in the park, having that same exhibit on display in the GC building. There was a lot of activity. And then, you know, in both instances, the brand-new arts board T-shirts, which are made from and inspired by the city's manhole covers. It's way cooler than it sounds, but those were on sale, and we've raised a great deal of money for arts and cultural programming in the city, and so I wanted to take a moment to thank that board. Also, big thank you to staff. DPS did a great job of getting us set up and torn down for the festival. I know it was difficult, because they typically use the GC building as kind of a staging area of sorts, and they gave us access to the majority of that building to be able to bring art to the people in the park during the festival, and it was a really great thing, and I appreciate their efforts, and I look forward to adding more and more arts programming into the city. It brings people together. It's fun for people of all ages, and it's especially great when it's art, in this case, photography, that was taken by residents in the city, of people and places in the city. And so it's a really cool thing. We'll make sure all of the photos are available on our city Facebook page, and then, you know, everybody will have access to them there, and we will make sure to run another one of these, so if you didn't get a chance to submit your photo in this year's photo contest, we'll definitely do another one. The second thing that I have today is, you know, not a very positive, not a very positive thing to bring up, but I guess in a sense it is. I'm happy that the voucher program is back, you know, in lieu of being able to bring a splash pad to our residents to give them that type of accessible summer fund. The voucher program is an incredible compromise that allows us to provide some ability for residents to get out and enjoy that type of a, you know, summer activity. The problem that I have in this year's program, last year we allowed it to go up to eight vouchers per household, and in this year's program, it was determined, not through a public vote, not through discussion, but through a board recommendation, as well as a staff recommendation, and, you know, some council dialogue via email, to reduce the threshold to four tickets per household. Now, the problem I have with that is we have a lot of blended and extended families in our city, and within minutes, I mean, literally within 45 minutes of our city posting on its Facebook about the voucher program returning, we had three individual families within 45 minutes say that they have families of six, immediately. I mean, within 45 minutes of posting it. I had multiple conversations at the festival in the park with families who are unable to still take advantage of the program, because even with being given four vouchers, they still can't afford to take their family to the water park. And so I don't think it was a very inclusive way of doing it. I understand the rationale. If you limit the vouchers, you can get more families in, but I think a more inclusive policy of simply asking them to affirm that they have more than that number of people in their household would have been a much better way to go. We wouldn't have as many families feeling left out. I just, I don't agree with the decision. I wish it would have come to a council meeting for us to talk about it and to allow members of the public to give feedback about it. You know, what's done is done. Again, I'm appreciative that the program is back. I voted for it in the goal session. I voted to include it in the government, or in the budget, but the actual guidelines of how we are allocating the vouchers, I do not agree with, and I think in moving forward in the future, especially in lieu of having a splash pad that is free and accessible to all residents at any time, free of charge, in lieu of that, we need to do a better job of making sure that this program is as inclusive as possible, understanding that a traditional four-person household is not the only makeup of households in our community. You know, whether it's blended, whether it's extended, whether it's just a larger family, we need to make sure that we're as inclusive as possible to our families that live in the city. Finally, I would like to echo the sentiments of Councilman Corbett. City manager Ben Myers has served our city incredibly well. I was very thankful to be able to spend the time with him when I came into office, and I know a lot of what we did and built on in the technology realm came because he had a very strong passion for technology as well, and as a fellow tech nerd, I appreciate that, and I wish him all the best.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gettings, any closing comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I think I'll close my comments for Mr. Myers in all due respects. I would like to ask, and I've never asked this in six years, if I could have an item on the next agenda, do I need a fellow councilperson to okay this, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we traditionally require two people, just to follow just the basic Robert's Rules of Orders, you know, to make a motion, you're going to need a second, so...
Is it too late to make that motion? Or should I add it at the next meeting?
I mean, at some point, you're going to need a maker of the motion and a second. So, I mean, you could, in theory, make a motion this evening and fish for support from another member of council tonight to add something to an agenda, and I suppose that would come with some sort of report from someone, if that's your request. But, yeah, a motion and a second.
So you're saying I could ask for a report right now?
That's a good idea. Yeah, yes, you can ask for reports.
Okay, I guess maybe I'll go that. I don't need two votes for that.
Well...
I mean, I've heard you guys ask for a million reports.
Yeah, so reports, there's no action of the body, so you can ask for a report, of course, but if you want action from the body, you'll need support.
Okay.
But, Your Honor, typically, with an informal request for a report, we take that silenced by the rest of council, as no objection from council, so if a majority of council would object to the report, we prefer to know that now.
Okay, I'll put it out there. And Cheryl, I say this from the bottom of my heart, okay? I've heard two, not stories tonight, but two things about moving the polling place. I know we've taken action, according to the city attorney, already, but now we're hearing from another party. Now, again, Cheryl, in all due respects, I am not questioning your judgment, your work, your research, or anything on this, but I was on the citizens' school liaison for most of the time I was on council, and not once did we have a meeting. And if there's any way that we could either sit down with the superintendent, maybe one-on-one, or, I think the man has some valid points. His biggest, I feel, is that he's claiming they had no knowledge. Again, with all due respect to Cheryl, I'm not doubting what she said in the report, but I'm trying to be fair to the citizens of Madison School District. If there's any way that we could possibly sit down, not so we could get beat up, but so we could at least hear, other than just the superintendent, if you think it's a bad idea, I've had a lot of bad ideas up here, but I'll be glad to ask for that to happen if possible. I still have one, two more other items.
Yeah, the floor's yours, Mr. Gettings.
Okay, I mean, you want me to relinquish what, after I'm done talking, then we could discuss that, or is it already a done deal? I know this is confusing.
Mr. Mayor, I am currently the city school liaison, and I believe that in November or December, shortly after I came on, the city clerk reached out to, I don't know if it would have been the superintendent's or the board members of both the districts, I don't know if Bishop Foley was included in that, and I followed up with her a couple of times to see if, you know, who were their representatives going to be, and when could we set up a meeting, because that is an, as needed, board, and what she had told me was that neither board, no one from either school district, had shown any interest in doing, meeting to do anything. So I would second the request that we do meet with both districts. I don't know who would, I don't know the next steps in that, but I am definitely open to doing that, and just no one seemed to have any interest, and with everything else going on, it sort of fell to the bottom, but perhaps we can revisit that? Is that...
So is there a motion to, just to convene the city school liaison committee and invite the appointed members to attend a meeting, a public meeting?
The more I'm thinking about it, maybe that's, then we're involving Lamphier, and maybe that would even be a bigger, bad idea, if you will, but...
No, more people in the room, more comments, doesn't hurt.
It's like the north and the south.
Again, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if it was the superintendent, or if it was the board members, but neither Lamphier nor Madison District, and again, I don't know if Foley was invited, responded, so, and had one school, I would have met with them. But, yes, I'm absolutely open to meeting with all three, both, one, whomever. Does that help?
I appreciate your support. If I could say one thing, Mr. Mayor, maybe just we could meet with the Madison folks, or at least somebody from the city. All I'm saying is, I'm not saying we made a mistake, but if they're claiming they had no notice, I mean, there was no certified mail or hand delivery...
But we do have...
I don't know. I just think we owe it to the school district, not that I was on that board for a long time, but their superintendent is standing up there at that podium, saying they weren't notified. Again, Cheryl, in all due respects, I'm not saying they were notified or weren't, but he's claiming they weren't. So that's my whole point, you guys. We're moving a polling district. My family moved in here in '62, and I believe they were voting there then, and they're voting there today at the old Edison School. I just think it's something that, now Cheryl, if you could tell me if we've already contacted the county, which we have, correct?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
Back in March of 2016, when we initially had the problems with the Edison School, or the Keys Grace Academy, when the doors were chained locked, and our DPS department had to come and cut them off because their custodian did not have a key for those doors, I reached out to the school district directly, and I asked, I talked to them about that problem, about the problem about me being moved to the new gym, which was in the very far portion of the school, which was far from the parking lot. I asked them about moving the buses, and I was told directly by Mr. Speck's staff that although they owned the building, they were not responsible for the maintenance of that building or the administration of the building, and I had to talk to them directly to resolve these issues. So I immediately contacted Keys Grace Academy administrative staff to work out some of the issues, and every election since, there's been one issue or another. As for the changing of the precinct, that, of course, is a city decision. If you want to change that decision, you can, however, it is too late to change it for the August election, and it is, there is very little window to change it for the November election, and I do not recommend changing that location in the middle of an election cycle. If you want to change it in the future, that's your prerogative, but I would not recommend doing anything until the 2019 election cycle.
Okay.
We've already notified 1,500 voters of the change. We sent them letters, personal letters, about the change, and we're in the process of issuing ballots.
I understand all that, Ms. Prince. I'm not asking for it to be changed in August nor November. I'm just asking if we can look at it. I know, Mr. Myers, this is a tough subject, I guess, but I'll wrap it up and just say, if everybody could maybe just take these thoughts home and ponder it, possibly, that we might be able to look at it one more time in the future, if you will, and that's all I'll say on it.
Your Honor. Mr. Bliss?
So far, there hasn't been a motion. As it appears to me, there are three things that we can do. Any one of the three, or all of the three in succession. We could ask for a even more detailed report, along with responses from the Madison School District, that would be then written to the record. We could convene the city school liaison committee and actually have a meeting with the districts. I do wonder, I think Royal Oak School District has voters in this precinct, so we'd probably have to invite them as well, if we're talking about polling locations. And then the other option would be to add at a later date, a public meeting to discuss whether or not to change the polling location back. So it could be any one of them, it could be none of them, but it seems to me those are the three options. Again, no motions yet, but those are the three options that we could take at any point in time, either tonight or down the road, just for the record's sake.
Your Honor, also, I forgot to mention that during the last two city election cycles, I have reached out to all three school districts for representatives for the city school liaison committee, and neither time have I gotten responses from any of the school districts.
Mr. Mayor, I'll wrap it up. What Mr. Bliss states, I think, are all good points. Again, if you guys could just take these thoughts home with you, and possibly could be visited at another date, if you will, that would be fantastic, I believe. I don't have anything else to say on that subject. Okay?
All right, Mr. Gettings.
One, a couple of more things.
Continue, continue, continue.
Okay. Just wanted to say, I was up here... Okay. Just wanted to say, I was up here yesterday for about an hour, and basically during the preparation, or, excuse me, the setting up, if you will, of the festival, I talked to Joe Vitale for a few minutes and watched all his workers at work. And being involved in 20-some festivals over the years, they did a fantastic job, as always. I heard the fireworks go off in my house, I heard it end, I think it was 20 minutes, give or take a, it was loud enough for me to just look at my clock and listen. When it ended, I stepped out on the front porch. But the festivals that we do here are fantastic. I mean, people come from miles around for this. And being a recreation person, hats off to the DPS, to the police, to the fire, to the city administration, because the festivals are fantastic. And the last but not least, again, I don't speak too much, you guys, so bear with me. I've had the privilege of working as an employee and as a council member with Mr. Myers. I will save most of my comments for a later date, but I can just say that as a professional, he's at the top of my list. He has done more for the city. I'd rate him right up there with the top city managers, and I've met like seven of them, but I'd have to put him in my Hall of Fame, and it's not easy to get in there. I'll waive the five-year waiting period and put him in automatically, if you will. But I say this, Ben, you are a superb human being, a fantastic city manager, and it was a pleasure working with you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would also echo the comments made by Councilman Corbett, Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, Councilman Giddings, to say thank you to Ben Myers for his 26 years of service to the city of Madison Heights. And we wish Ben and his family all the best as they begin this new chapter in their lives.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Myers, I'll give you the last word. Do you mind if I skip you now?
Can I thank the DPS for the festival?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, thanks to DPS, police, fire, recreation, all the volunteers that make every festival successful. You know, I've had a few years of, of helping to run the festival and work it, and it's a very long day, and a few years being as manager, where I wonder, am I gonna get a text some night? Because when you think about all the variables that could happen during that day and night with that many people involved, and fireworks, and weather, and all the services that are being provided by multiple agencies, and for it to go year after year without a problem, you know, that's, that's not by luck or chance, that's by hard work, good planning, and quality individuals doing the event. So hats off to everyone above. And thank you for the last word.
Yeah, I'll give you the final word in a few minutes. City Clerk, Ms. Prince?
Thank you. State primary election is Tuesday, August 7. If you would like an absentee ballot, please contact the city clerk's office or stop by and make an application. Our phone number is 248-583-0826. You can also call, and we can mail you an application. Remember, you must fill out an application before we can provide you a ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Grafstein?
I would like to say thank you to Ben for all your help these last few months. I appreciate your support with my transition to council. We're not done, so I do appreciate that everything you have done so far.
And you never will be.
Never will be, probably. And I do, I really, I appreciate your help with reorganizing the Environmental Citizens Committee. You were instrumental with that, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Last night, I was at the festival, I watched fireworks for, I was there for a couple of hours. It was great. Hats off to everybody who contributed. And one of the nice things was, it wasn't just people in the city. There were people that I know aren't from here, but they come here because they enjoy it. And everyone seemed to be having a great time. There were older people, there were younger people, there were teenagers. It was great. It was just a whole mix, and it was really, really nice. Along the lines of reorganizing the Environmental Citizens Committee, one of the things I'd like to do as well is look at the Crime Commission and just sort of see what are the things that we're doing with that we should keep doing, what are things we might want to change. And one of, one of the other areas I wanted to look at was the school city liaison. It is an as-needed board, and if we need to meet more than we should, but we need to have our initial meeting. So anything I can do to help facilitate getting that along, let me know. And as for the GFL, the, for those of you in the audience sitting over on the side are the toters we're talking about, the garbage cans and the recycling toters. My family will probably not use the recycling. We might start recycling more, but we definitely won't use the garbage cans because we do a lot of, we food compost, and that is what the bulk of, of garbage is, is it's food compost. And one of the things I would really like to see, and I've had, I've had people ask me about this, you know, we're doing this with the recycling, we're doing this with the garbage, why aren't we doing this with food compost? It is something that down the road I'd like to look at. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm having rough speaking problems here, so excuse me if I have to stop. I wanted to thank the Arts and Cultural Advisory Board. I'm serving there as a cultural alternate, and I wanted to say that the T-shirts are now available. You can get them online, or you can get these forms that you fill out. There are five colors available, and many sizes available, and I know we're proudly wearing them at the festival and elsewhere. So I think that's great that they've done that. I also applaud all the people that entered the photo contest. I was privileged to be one of the judges, and I felt that it was challenging. And we had so many admissions, submissions, and I applaud all those people that did that. I wanted to also mention that on July 14, at Rosie's Park, there will be a barbecue fundraiser, and it is sponsored by Donna, Donna's Christmasland, who is a wonderful lady, who is usually here at our council meeting, Donna Mitchell, but she is having a fundraiser for the Harvest Festival and the Thanksgiving Dinner and Christmas. It is on July 14, again, from 11 to 7 p.m. in Rosie's Park. And I wanted to thank her for all the things that she has done for our citizens, for helping those who need help and are not available to get any. I also wanted to thank the staff for the excellent festival that was put on. It was really well organized. I know I also want to thank the Gospel Life Church, who stays around every year to clean up, and it's a big job. They were, also had a booth, and were passing out homemade cookies. So I think they're a wonderful organization, and I appreciate their help, because that is something we normally have to pay our city staff for, but they hang around and make sure that the, that the whole area is restored to its first, first, to, to, to good order. Now, I also want to say a few things about Ben Myers. I've had the privilege of working with Ben. He and I, and my husband, we almost had a business transaction going on in 1996. Unfortunately, it didn't work out, but I got to know Ben as a true family man. I got to meet his beautiful wife, Denise, his children, Sarah, Anna, and Ethan. He's extremely proud of those children. He and his wife are wonderful parents, and I would like to, everyone be aware of what a typical, good family man he is. I've been proud to work with him since June 26, 1993, when I came on the council. And he has been nothing but professional. He was suggested by John Austin to come on to the fold of the city as our, and as now our assistant, well, is now our assist, our city manager, excuse me. But I wanted to thank him for all the dedication he has put in for all these many years. He earned his credentials in the ICMA, which I think was required of you when you took the job. But if not, I would have asked you to do it anyways, because I feel that education in whatever doing around this table is so important. And I urge everybody to get as educated as possible. I also wanted to wish him well in his future. I can only see bright things happening to him. Any city who hires Ben will be very enviable. I will be very enviable, that city, the fact that he's working for them and doing the same excellent job that he did for us. And to sum up, I would probably like to say that tomorrow I will be celebrating my 25th anniversary of being on this council. And this is one of the standard stages of my life. I thank you. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Margie. Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Mr. Soltis?
Yes, Your Honor. I want to thank the senior advisory board members that showed up tonight. I appreciate your coming forward and speaking out, changed the name. I guess I'm eligible to join, so we'll see what happens. But I appreciate the senior, excuse me, the active adult center, because every year we go to Lansing, and they provide the transportation, and the, so it's a great time. So I appreciate all that, that you do in the center, and Jennifer. Jennifer does a wonderful job there, too, and all the volunteers. So I appreciate that. Also, they, I spoke out before, the county has a program for seniors, for older residents that need home care, that can't afford it. And they have a program now. There's only a short window that is open. So please, call the city, call me, 248-219-6381, so you can get on that, that list and, and get the services that you need free of charge for the county. Again, it's a short window that's open. The funds are limited, so you really have to take advantage of it right away. And lastly, I too want to thank Ben Myers for, for all your hard work and your dedication and service here. I'm sure you're gonna be happy that you don't have me all in your hair every time, "Ben, what about this? Ben, can we do this?" All that kind of stuff. You don't have to worry about that anymore. And so I appreciate it. I know, I remember, I was in grad school, and I just finished, and I had to do an internship. And I thought, why not the city that I live in? So I got ahold of Ben, and emailed him and talked to him a little bit on the phone. But, you know, I really appreciate that you took the time to talk to me and gave me the chance to complete that internship. I really appreciated that. And that was kind of the beginning of, of, you know, how things came out. So thank you and good luck, and I wish you well, you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Mr. Soltis. I already thank the Police Department and Deputy Chief for their hard work at our pre-4th of July festival. I also want to thank Joe Vitale for all the hard work, for members of the DPS and Parks and Recreation who participated in setting up and monitoring the operations during the event. Like Mr. Giddings said, this festival is a draw for the whole region. I mean, how many people do we expect cross the grounds during this day? I mean, thousands and thousands of people. And they view our city, I think, quite nicely, just how clean and safe and well-run it is. And like Mr. Giddings also said, that takes a lot of effort of men and women to produce such a thing. Also, thanks to the Fire Department for keeping an eye on things. I also wanted to thank Ben Myers for his many years of service to Madison Heights, as Mr. Sherman said, 26 years. Ben's worked in many roles during his employment with the city of Madison Heights, as an assistant city manager in the 90s, in the early 2000s, and then as deputy city manager, starting in 2006, and then city council hired him as the city manager in 2012. And before he was the official city manager, he had a hand in a lot of really major historic city projects. One, which is near and dear to many residents' hearts, is reopening and saving of the Nature Center at the Friendship Woods. Ben was instrumental in negotiating the contract with Oakland County Parks and Recreation. And Ben also, you know, with his experience with the Department of Public Services, helped to really modernize how we operate in the Department of Public Services. Major contracts. I mean, we talked about the trash contract tonight. Ben was instrumental in signing that first multi-year agreement, one of the biggest contracts in the history of the city. And then as city manager, Ben continued to be our leader for every complex transaction that our government goes through. And he especially pulled us through the great, you know, getting through the Great Recession, just the, the hangover from the Great Recession. Ben, you led us through, you know, really creative projects, like building the Employee Wellness Center, becoming, you know, that has become a model for the country, really. You got us through the pension bond sale, a really complex professional transaction. You were able to break it down for, for me and members of the public to understand and to believe in. And you were also, you know, the leader of our bargaining team for multiple successful rounds of collective bargaining with all of our city employee unions, and all of the time maintaining our credit rating. So thank you. And, you know, personally, Ben and his role as manager, he, you know, he's helped city council when we come up with new ideas. So Ben, thank you for, for helping council, you know, respond to the changing times of our city by, you know, helping us form boards in technology, multiculturalism, and arts. You found creative ways to, you know, to, to let the public express themselves in those subjects. So thank you for taking our ideas and actually turning that into a solution. Ben also was the city manager as we've made our city a whole lot safer during the last few years by transforming some of the ways we address public safety, by expanding undercover operations, by, Ben helped us upgrade all of our fire, our fire engines to advance life support. I mean, so Ben leaves a legacy of professionalism, of creativity, of support, of safety, and innovation, especially when it comes to the way we operate. So Ben, thank you for your time and dedication to the city, and I wish you and your family the best in your next projects. So I don't believe there's any further business before tonight. So Ben, I'll allow you to make any closing remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm only gonna need 25 minutes for my closing comments tonight. Thank, thank you, thank you for the, for the very kind words. And by the way, Councilwoman Scott, I want to pass along that Melissa Marsh has that same ICMA credential. So I know you're gonna be in outstanding, outstanding hands with Melissa as your, as your acting city manager. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the city for the past 26 years, and, and more important than just the time, it's, it's been an, an honor to work alongside such a dedicated, hard-working and professional group of department heads, city employees, our outside contractors, working with multiple councils, volunteers, our, our friends from other communities that have, where we've helped each other along the way. That's, that's been very, very meaningful, and that's, and that's past and present. I'm big on team accomplishments, and, and anything I could take credit for, and Mayor, that was quite an impressive list you read, and I'm proud of all those things, but those were team accomplishments. I could, I could assign Melissa's name to nearly all, everything on that list, because we work together as a staff to get things done. And I'm very proud of all that we've, we've accomplished together over the years. So with that, I'll close by wishing the council and the community all the best in, in meeting the challenges that lie ahead for you. And thank you. Thank you very much.
Hit the gavel, and the meeting's adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.